I had the idea to have a community forum, to listen to the people in the communities on a different, a lot of different issues that is going on in Memphis, but especially the killings and the murders in Memphis and the black-on-black crime. So, we want to go on and get started. I would like to have my co-conspirator here to come up because he's a lifelong founder as well of the Commission Against Senseless Killings with Mr. El Amin. And he's very familiar with most of the panelists. I am not familiar with all of the panelists. I know Judge Joe Brown because I worked for the Sheriff's Office in Memphis, also for the Police Department. So, I saw him in court a long time ago. I've been gone 15 years and now I'm back. I know Ms. Harris, Attorney Harris, because a lot of organizations that are not even in Memphis is supporting her candidacy, and I'll just leave that at that. I also know Mr. Handel Durham, a long story. He knows my family, almost my whole family and everything, and we know mutual people in government and everything. So, but the other one, Ms. Melanie Taylor, I just met her today, and Brittany Thornton and Ms. Brittany Thornton. Now, I will turn it over to Mr. Waleed Shaheed, so that he can do everything else. We will have a timekeeper for any, I guess, housekeeping. The bathrooms are out the door before you go out. The main exit to your left. There are a few snacks. We weren't trying to fill anybody up, but if you get a wet mouth or, you know, your mouth is dry and you want to wet it, we have that, and we have chips. Also, if you want a snack on those for anybody that wants them as well. There's a sign-in sheet if you haven't signed in at the door as you come in and as you leave. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tara. We're going to say welcome again. I thank all of you for coming out and joining the Commission Against Senseless Killing Town Hall meeting here live from the Benjamin Hooks Library in Memphis, Tennessee. We know that these public meetings, they are open to the public, and people are invited to ask questions, to say what they think about a particular subject or issue or a problem. CAS itself, Community Against Senseless Killing, has a history going back into the 90s. It was founded by Brother Talute El Amin, a good friend of mine, brother, and it was fueled by a desire to see crime and violence and senseless killing ended or occurred. There were countless meetings and vigils and forums and activities trying to bring like-minded people around to address the issues. Tonight, we have what we call a constellation of stars in the legal and judicial profession to bring us their unique insights and thoughts and positions on crime, violence, senseless killings in our locale and in the region and in the country. Our format this evening is as follows. We want to have a 10-minute uninterrupted presentation, up to, let's say, up to 10 minutes. 10 minutes is a lifetime of your speaking. Okay, so we'll say up to 10 minutes, uninterrupted by each presenter. There'll be some index cards that will be circulated and passed out for each of us to ask our questions or make comments on. And you can direct your question to a presenter or it can be for the panelists at large. So, without any further delay, our presenters this evening will be Attorney Melanie Taylor-Jefferson. You can just raise your hand, all right? Attorney Handel Durham Jr., Esquire. Brittany Thornton, who is a community organizer in historic Orange Mountain. Attorney Linda Harris and Judge Joe Brown. So, without any further delay, we're going to ask our first presenter, Attorney Melanie Taylor-Jefferson, to come forward. We can give up.
I'm amazed at that energy when you told me I was going first. I do the short straw, so that means you have to hear from me. I'm Attorney Melanie Taylor-Jefferson. I've been practicing law a little over 30 years. When I first started practicing law, I started out, I was in private practice, and one of the first courtrooms as far as criminal court was concerned, I would work and be appointed cases by the Honorable Judge Joe Brown. He was the one, he was the one that helped mold me and shape me into the criminal attorney that I was at that time. I did later transition and not do as much criminal law. I've been practicing law long enough now where my clients have children that, you know, engage in criminal conduct and then grandchildren that engage in criminal conduct. And it's really a sad cycle that you see because you wonder why people keep engaging in criminal conduct. They rear children that engage in criminal conduct. Their children's children. But let me tell you a story about Judge Joe Brown, what he did to me when I was a brand-new attorney. So, they told me, "Well, if your client doesn't have a bond or if, you know, his bond is set too high, then you go and you plead to the court. You tell the court about how your client would be a good person in the community. He's got sufficient ties and contacts and that, you know, work history, family history, grounded, not a flight risk." Blase, blase, blase. I did all of that. At the end, that man said, "One million dollars." Almost finished. I had no idea that the bond could be increased. I just thought that I'd go up there and ask for the bond reduction and that the bond would either be reduced or it would stay the same, no, maybe denied. This man increased it to a million dollars. And I'm standing there with the client, and the client is like, "What in the world just happened?" And I'm like, "I don't know, but you still staying here." So, that's my first experience with him. Trials with him where, I think he would go in the back and eat, but he would let us eat. You stand up there from 8:00 in the morning until about 10, 11:00 at night. You get your lunch break, but those other snacks and other breaks, he was a slave master, but it was a good lesson, not only to the attorneys but to the individuals that were accused of crimes, the allegations against them. You know, everybody is considered innocent until proven guilty. Well, unfortunately, and I'm glad to see this cask of task force being, that was created because what we have in Memphis is horrid. It's horrible that we have people who think that it is okay for them to take from another person, whether they're taking their property, whether they're taking their life. It's horrible what we're doing here, and you really want to know what the solution to the problem is. So, I'll just say this, I believe that, you know, I really have a great deal of respect for Judge Joe Brown. It was his alternative sentencing that really helped. He would make people write a sentence, a line, a word until they got harp or tongue. And then he would make sure that each line that they were supposed to write was done and the amount of times that he said, "Do it." If he said 50,000 times, it better not be 49,999. Then he'd make them come back and get that other one to make the 50,000. So, it was his alternative sentencing and the creative ways that he would make these, the people who were accused of crimes, come to a realization about what they were doing and how it was wrong. It's unfortunate that now we don't have people who are creative in that area, trying to figure out ways to get people to think about what it is that they're doing before they do it. Think before you act. Think before you speak. Think before you do. And that's a problem. But the other problem, like I was saying at first, is how crime is not a generational thing, but that's what it looks like. You can't go to the gas station, have your baby in the car without a certain fear inside your heart that you and your baby and your car might not make it the next 10 minutes or until your tank gets on full. So, the problem is, how do we come up with effective solutions to these problems? That's what we need to work on. We need to figure out how to get people to realize that engaging in criminal conduct is not the way for us to have a society that has some continuity of peace. And that's where we have an issue. So, part of what we need to do in this discussion tonight is try to create effective means or ways that we as a people can come together and help individuals instead of engaging in criminal conduct as their first line of defense, to try to think of ways that they can acquire that which they need, have respect for their fellow man. So, I'll put my plug in. That's one of the reasons why I'm running for Tansbury Court, Part One, is so that I can hopefully make a difference in the lives, even though my courtroom that I'm running for is a civil court, I still will have the opportunity to deal with individuals one-on-one, have their cases come before me, and make decisions that I hope will enhance, improve their lives and be able to apply the law to the facts that are presented to me and to do that in a fair and impartial way. I thank you for this period of time that I've had, and I'm going to pass the baton. And I promise you, I'm going to let go of the mic for the next person. I'm not going to hold the baton like some people do. I'm going to let it go. I'm going to let it go. But I really appreciate you being so attentive. If you have questions, I'll be more than happy to answer what I'm able to answer, but we have a whole panel of distinguished members here that will be able to answer questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Attorney Jefferson. You did part of my job because I was supposed to introduce you, but you did an excellent job on giving your own biography. The next presenter will be Attorney Handel Durham Jr., Esquire.
Thank you.
Okay, he's a graduate of Central High School, Shelby State Community College, Southwest Community College, La Morn On College. He attended Memphis State University where he had his Juris Doctorate degree in 1983. He began practicing law with his partners, Alan Bryan and James F. Kyle. His major area of practice right now is criminal defense, medical malpractice, personal injury, and collections law. Without any further ado, Attorney Handel R. Durham Jr., Esquire.
Thank you.
Yes.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Taylor, for being the first one up. Let me explain. My name is Handel Durham, and I've been practicing law for 38 years. I graduated Central High, class of 71. And I started practicing with my law partner, me, arrested, he's Alan Bryan Chambers and Jim Kyle, who's now chancellor. We were partners. And during that course of time, believe it or not, I've owned two liquor stores. In 1982, we brought a, Alan Bryan Chambers and myself brought a lawsuit against a hotel here where I was the assistant manager, the first black assistant manager that the Hyatt Regency Hotel had. And because of problems they had with individuals that came in, they said that, "Well, we want to put them in housekeeping." That's okay. At the time, I was the assistant manager. I was managing over 400 to 800 people at one time. I was over the front office, front desk, bail captain, and the front desk clerk and cashiers and reservations. But this individual decided, well, and it seems as if this is something that you, a script out of Hollywood. They come in and they said, "We're going to put you in housekeeping," which is fine. I can, I know how to make up a bid, however, it was the manner in which they did it. And there are certain insults in life that you take, you have to bear. If you've got children, they will make you, they will insult you in a lot of ways, and your wife, your friends, and family, but you tolerate that. I did not have to tolerate this insult. So, we brought, I got with Alan Chambers, who pretty much my grandmother was one of, knew his nanny and everything, and we had a relationship, and I told him what happened. And instead of the Civil, instead of the 1983 action under the EEOC, he decided, "What we want to do is bring out this, we're going to utilize this law that's been on the books over 100 years, the Civil Rights Act of 1871, I think it was." And in fact, we, recently, you've heard about it, it's called the Klan Act. We filed this lawsuit in 1979. We came to trial and we, it was, well, we had a jury trial before Judge McCray, I believe it was, in 1982. It was an eight-man jury, eight-person jury, I'm sorry, four men, four women, four blacks, four whites, evenly split for 19, and this was in 1982. They all unanimously came back with a verdict on my behalf, and we won. That was the Klan Act of 1871 that put Benny Thompson, Congressman Benny Thompson, and the January 6th Committee are talking about using today, in which they have filed a lawsuit. But we were, we used it, Alan Bryan Chambers and myself, in 1979, when I think when we filed that lawsuit, and '82 when it, we took it to trial. As a result of that lawsuit and the monetary damages, which told, close to, attorney fees and everything, close to, it was $36,000 plus, whatever, it came close to $50,000 with attorney fees and everything else. And at that point in time, which Judge Brown asked me to talk about liquor stores, that's how I bought my liquor stores. I had one in Orange Mountain and I had one in Hyatt Park, at Springdale and Chelsea and at Park and Green. And from there, I went on, I was in law school at that time because when Alan brought this lawsuit under the Klan Act, there were words that I didn't understand, that the regular dictionary did not bring me focus to it. My uncle told, "Well, why don't you try law school?" And I did, I got in, and I graduated in '83, a year after we were successful. And it was, and the whole point of the matter is that I had a desire to be educated, I had a desire to be an entrepreneur, I had a desire to do something. Now, the focus tonight is the violence. I'm a, I do a lot of criminal defense. I see young black kids, young, especially young black men, who believe that being a man is to be aggressive and violent. That is their definition of man here, and it doesn't bother them to go to jail. That's a badge of honor. This is what I'm saying collectively. And they want to impress their friends. I see it. I talk to them. I've got three or four cases that are pending. Okay, I've got three or four cases that are pending, and it's that common thread. They want to be viewed as tough, and part of being tough is having a gun. Part of being tough is to inflict injury on someone. Now, how do we cure that? I don't know. I don't understand why an individual admirer want to be a gangster because that is their, that is what they emulate. And when you look at the rapper, rappers, their names, Al Capone, Yo Gotti, John Gotti. Okay, you're making good money off of this, but they're studio gangsters. But our children who worship these rappers, sports and music, this is what they see. And I think that helps create this violence that we witness in our neighborhood. They're not, and I explained to a lot of them, "You're supposed to be the protector of the neighborhood." When Ms. Johnson looks out and want her daughter to go down the street to study with a classmate, she see a group of us standing around under the light, having fun, talking. Then she knows her daughter is safe going down there instead of being fearful of whether or not some idiot is going to pull up a gun and to prove his manhood and start shooting. I don't know what the answer is. I see the problem and I'm fearful. In fact, I'm almost certain I won't live to see the answer. There will be an answer. There will be an answer, but are we, and there is a solution, and that solution probably means that we have to suspend certain parts of the Constitution to get it corrected in our neighborhood. We cannot expect Germantown to solve a Whitehaven problem. Now, that is, and the reason I know this is because I pick juries, juries, and it amazes me how people who live under one roof could have such a divided opinion. You talk to a Germantown housewife versus a housewife out of Whitehaven, and it is frightening how different and how divisive or how divided their views are. And all, and you can mention one word and you'll get the feedback, and I've done this, O.J. Simpson. Just say that. It's amazing, how diverse and how separated we are. So, but the problem that's in our community is going to have to be solved by us. It's not going to be solved by other individuals. And as men, as men, we're going to have to step up and deal with our children, our boy child, who thinks it's okay to walk down with his pants hanging off his butt, who thinks it's okay to refer to his mother, his daughter, his sister as bitches. Because some studio gangster who's making a ton of money is telling you that this is the cool way of being. I see it every day. I try cases like this every day. I have to educate jurors, and the first thing I love telling people is that the gangster, rap, thug life is not the black life. We are different as night and day. Now, I don't know what the answer is. I know what the problems are, but the problem is start with us. And one last thing I have to say, my uncle, John Cleese, he's 85, 86 years old. He was on the jury. He was on a sequestered jury for a week. And after he got out of that jury, it shocked him because it was about a murder, a senseless killing. And it stuck with him for the, but one thing he told me as being, while being on the jury is that when he spoke as a man, that the women on there looked up to him. Now, they're older and they may sound misogynistic, but he said, "When he spoke up, they focused on him, the women, the black women that were on that jury would look to him because they saying, 'Here is a man.'" I hope I covered most of everything, and I could talk on and on. As you can see, I'm a talker. But I say what I mean. I mean what I say, and I stand by what I say, and I don't make apologies. Thank you.
You forgot to announce your suggestion.
Oh, yes. Thank you there, Mr. Retired Attorney, Mr. Henry Bridge, for thank you. Yes, I am a candidate for General Sessions Criminal Court, Division 7. And I've pulled a petition and I'm going to, and I'm running, and I'm running hard and heavy. And this, and as you can see, I have a unique perspective on how to deal with the problem. And I think I'll be able to address it and deal with it better. I'll take it a step higher from where it is now. And I want to thank everyone. Thank you, Mr. Bridge.
Thank you so much, Attorney Durham. Those were some very informative points that you brought out. Our next presenter is Brittany Thornton. She's a native Minthian from Orange Mountain. Oh, that's a Orange Mountain. That's a, that's a, that's a money chain out, big money chain out in there, Orange Mountain. Licensed social worker, licensed educator, former law student, and a community organizer. She's a graduate of Baylor University and the University of Pennsylvania and founder of the nonprofit organization Juice Orange Mountain. Welcome.
I am experiencing a lot of tension right now, so I hope over the next five minutes we can work it out together. My name is Brittany Thornton. I'm with the candidate part of the front end. I'm running for District 10 County Commission. Signatures are in, so I'm confirmed as of today, so I'm excited about that. This is the district formerly, well, Mr. Commissioner Mosley isn't in it. He's term limited. He's moving to a different position. In the time that I have now, Attorney Graham just talked about solutions and how, you know, he did a full analysis of the problem, so I'm hoping we can be a two-part unplanned, like co-presentation here. I grew up in Orange Mountain, post-'80s drug era. So, for me, a lot of things that my elders speak about in Orange Mountain, and I'm going to use Orange Mountain as a case study because I think it applies to Orange Mountain, it can really help a lot of our other neighborhoods where we're seeing some of this problematic behavior. So, post-'80s drug era for me really looked like normalized drug culture. I remember when I was 13, getting my first camera, and the first thing that I recorded was my neighbor across the street coming down off of a high. I later learned that this was a crack house that he was, you know, associated with, so I'm assuming that that was his drug of choice. And these type of things were just normal, gang culture, drug culture, were just things that we didn't second guess, you know, growing up playing games like drive-by, where literally if a car drove down the street, we prepared ourselves to be shot, traumatic things. These are things that it wasn't until I went to college that I started to unpack and analyze just how dysfunctional and traumatic my upbringing was in this beautiful community of historic Orange Mountain. So, when I look around this room and I see people, not a lot of people who I would regularly associate with being in my age bracket, I'm a millennial, I'm 32 years old, the question is, is how did my experience in Orange Mountain become the experience? And it seems like it's been that way for a while because when I left home and I came back home, it really looks like the same community, in many ways worse, only better because some of the problematic spaces have literally crumbled and been torn down, burned down, in more dysfunction. So, I listen to elders often, and I'm so grateful to be groomed and raised by elders who are still on the ground organizing, leading, and doing really great things and share stories with me about when they were thirty-two in Orange Mountain, the way the community was connected, the way that they had goods and services, sundries and shops and all these like amazing places that I just had not experienced. And I think about the generations behind, and the question is, when will the tide turn? What generation will be to experience again? What has been, you know? And I just, I pause for that experience because I think that that truth has to be something that we have to, I graduated from Harvard Academy, so you can imagine sitting here with Miss Linda Carey going to talk about traditional schools. hearing them talk about traditional schools like Booker T. Washington Carver, Hamilton. It's another form of tension for me. Because when my mom decided to put me into my pipeline that I was on, I was a gifted student, went to Hellman Elementary on Miss Brueje Panty. When she prepared for me to go to another school, in high school, she was concerned. So for her, the trajectory did not match the giftedness of her child. And that was a decision that was made for me. It was one that I could control, it was made for me. But I look at so many of my peers who did not go to the neighborhood school. And there's a truth here that we have to own. The fact that our communities are no longer powerhouses cultivating our people. Our communities are left for a certain demographic of our people. And really, the poor black tag is something that is associated with so many communities that we love like Orange Town. When we think about other neighborhoods similar to Orange Town, it doesn't really have a very positive representation. And when you think about where so many of us live, so many of your children, so many of my peers, they're not in Orange Town. Literally, I just got a call from the other millennial that I get to engage with, and he is a thirty-one-year-old that went down a really different path than I did. A lot of my friends are in East Memphis, they're in Midtown, they're in, you know, what, downtown now? So many of my friends are going down there. And when I try to ask them to come back home, they don't feel like there's a space for them. So I think that as we think about this, there's a couple of things, as I take my seat, I just wanna bring to our mindfulness. Not that we should judge the criminal, but we should understand who were there before they committed the crime. And oftentimes in our communities, there are nieces, our nephews, our neighbors of, you know, even if it's our beloved friends, niece and nephew. It's some relationship that we have broken and we have not cultivated. My degrees are in social work, so for me, the solution is always gonna come through building relationships. And there are clear broken relationships between the generations. We can't sit high and look low. We have to go reclaim, you know, these criminals that are on... Because at the end of the day, they're coming back to us, they're relying on us for their support systems when they get out of prison, when they get out of jail, when they need, you know, transit for these probation office appointments, like, they need us. And so we aren't able to fully disconnect, even if we are not the caught criminal. And I went to a lecture here recently where it talked about, how many of you have committed a crime? Every one? Let's be honest. Have you jaywalked? Have you driven a bus speed limit? We should have, I would think, everyone in here raise their hands, right? But how many of you were caught for that crime?
I took the fifth.
And so, I think that there's a sense of humility that we need to bring to this conversation around crime, because we all are criminals. It's just weird where we are catching criminals and the policing of our communities that is producing a certain demographic of criminals that we really have to be mindful of. Our neighborhoods need us. It's not time for us to move away. It's time for us to do counterintuitive things, to run to our neighborhoods, to bring back our character, our sensibilities, our education, you know? I went all the way up thankfully to experience what I believe education was like. And I'm still back fighting very hard to live in my home community, which has not been an easy thing to do. We need more of these, we need more views, and we definitely need to be in relationship with our young people that we can see our own pathway to lead them down criminal behavior. And there's no way that we can prepare the futures for generations to come if these relationships are broken. So, today, I just wanna leave you with these questions. Who are our criminals? What relationships did we have before they committed the crime? How do we restore broken relationships? And if given better opportunities, would people choose to still commit crimes? And I think that when we really sit in the truth in that, there are some of our young people who have not been given the best opportunities to not commit crimes and go down these pathways that are forever altering their lives. My background and reentry has taken me up to the Philadelphia prison system where I worked in House of Corrections and seen firsthand what that experience is like. And it's something that when I talk to my clients, if they could do it all over again, they would have wanted for more or done something differently. And I think that that's where the needs and uses of the world, we can really plug ourselves in to be there in those early moments to help people be able to do better. So, I appreciate this platform and hope to see you check out my candidacy in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thornton. I took my hat to you for the work we're doing with Juice Orange Mountain. I saw through snippets of it on Channel Thirteen News, and we'll talk a little bit later. Our next presenter is an attorney. Ms. Linda, Attorney Linda Harris, she's in Tennessee Supreme Court, Rule Thirty-One, General Civil Court and Family Law Listed Mediator, and an independent arbitrator for Financial Industry Regulatory Authority. She's currently a panel member on the list of mediators for the Western District of Tennessee, and has served on the panel since 2014. She's worked as a federal prosecutor and as an Assistant U.S. Attorney Trial Lawyer for the United States Department of Justice in the Western District of Tennessee for many years. She has many memberships and honors which include the National Bar Association, the BNF Jones Chapter, the American Bar Association, Memphis Bar Association, and a host of other associations, which will take us too long, and awards, but we welcome...
One other thing too. One of the founders of the Afro-American, Memphis Afro-American Police Association.
You didn't hear that.
She was a damn good street cop.
Well, thank you, thank you, Judge. But you know, one of the things I did as a street cop is, I don't care who it was, and I don't care what they did, they were always treated with dignity and respect. You know, when I saw, I looked at policewomen in Memphis one time, and I saw a policewoman dragging a black man on the ground, and, you know, I don't care what he did, he didn't deserve to be dragged on the ground, because if you're gonna treat him with less than humanity, then what are you saying? And so, I started. But, I'm gonna back up and say, I can assure you that we should not tolerate lawlessness in our community. And, you know, we have to deal with that, and I can assure you, I am a candidate for Sheriff of County District Attorney, and I will deal with that. But the things that I'm about to say, when we talked about the history and why, how we got here, when I was a street cop, I remember a group of kids running around the lawn道, and they called and says, "A-Team," that's how long ago this been, right? It was Mr. T. But they were terrorizing people in the lawn, "I know I care." Why? Because it was confined to the lawn道. And then, you know, as we move on, we look at where we are now. Because when you don't resolve issues that are happening in one community, it's going to spread, and it's gonna come to a community near you, and you cannot run far enough. So, what were the causes of, what was happening here? We know we have racial disparity in this system. We know that we have a system where people are unjust, because we got like people like Patricia Malone, we have people like Purvis Payne, who are denied justice, and, you know, that kind of triples down. We have mass incarceration of nonviolent offenders. And so, we have, we're putting so many nonviolent offenders into the system that we're not dealing with the violent offenders. We have a lot of mental health, and we have a lot of drug and alcohol issues, and a lot of poverty in our community. So, what do you do? I don't have all of the answers either, but I only restore to practice person. And as I said, we put the people in jail who are violent and keep our community safe. But what are they doing? Brittany brought up a very good point, which is, we deal with the what in the criminal justice system. And we are reactive in the criminal justice system, but we're not proactive. And we need to become proactive. And while people need to be held accountable, and while people need to go to jail, we're just looking at the what. But why is that happening? What's happening to cause this? Statistically, people don't understand restoring practice because it's a with. You don't do things for people, you don't do things with people. I'm sorry, you don't do things for them, you don't do it to them, you don't be neglectful, you do it with them. And it is about community engagement. We have to come up with alternative to mass incarceration of nonviolent offenders. One of the things I saw in the federal system is that it was unjust. Now, don't get me wrong, I put people in prison, but the harsh sentencing guidelines for drug offenses, people get more time for a drug offense than they do for killing someone. And, you know, this is what they know, and this is what's been going on, and the same things are revolting in the system. So, it is also about redemption, okay? If, what do we do when we want to, and I'm talking about redemption of individuals who are felons, who can never, ever, 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 if you commit a drug crime, give you a license restored. And I say drug crime because back in the eighties, that's who most people were who go in jail, right? And now, it can never, ever, ever, ever get their license restored fully. They're always a felon for the rest of their lives. When we want our children to do better, what do we do? Do we incentivize them? So, you know, at some point, maybe ten years, or at some other point, maybe we could look at, if you don't commit another crime, if you are a citizen, can we redeem that person? Can that person be fully restored at some point? And I think that will help to incentivize people to create less crime. And, you know, I have someone to look to, that's Judge Joe Brown, who did come up with alternative sentencing, and we have to consider that. Because what we're doing is not working, folks, it's just not working. And, you know, I know, working with this community, one other thing I wanna add is that I'm not gonna sit here and tell you, hey, this is what we're gonna do, because that never works. What is happening in law enforcement is they sit in a room, they make a plan, and they take it out to the community and say, this is what we're gonna do. I have talked to people who have been incarcerated. I have worked with a young man, Kenneth Madd. He was incarcerated as a sixteen-year-old, as an adult. But he was incarcerated as in the adult system. Okay, he was incarcerated in the adult system. And what you find is, they sometimes come out worse than they were when they went in. So, you know, that's not working. And we had, in 2012, now, you know, some kids are transferred, but in 2012, what the Department of Justice said, and I'm gonna start with what the Department of Justice said, the crime, when you look at the crime that the child committed, when you look at the background of the child, when you look at all of the statutory factors, which include the education and all that, more black kids were being transferred to adult court. And that's a fact that was filed by the Department of Justice. They did better, and then when Trump was elected in 2016, they said, well, we don't need monitoring anymore, and then those numbers went back up. You do have a lot of, you do have a lot of environmental factors, a lot of poverty. But one thing we don't do is conflict resolution. How do we resolve our conflicts? We cuss each other out, you know, you stand in those, you're so, 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 I'll do this to you, or you come over here and I'll do it. It's learned behavior. It's not a quick fix, it's not a quick answer. But I think that we can work together to teach conflict resolution in this community. And that's one of the things that I wanna focus on, working with our kids, working with the school system. It's gonna take a community, it takes a village, for us, us, to turn this around. So, I'm going to form steering committees, and that will include community advocates, it will include the nonprofit sector, it will include, you know, other people in healthcare profession, all the experts, you know, it's just steering committees. I'm not gonna tell you who they are, it will include you, it will include you, it will include you. Those who have value and can bring something to our system will all be welcome to the table. And it includes restoring trust in law enforcement, justice, integrity, and accountability to law enforcement.
Thank you so much, Attorney Harris, thank you so much. That's the kind of leadership we need. Our next presenter, I don't think he does many of the things in orthodox, huh? His biography starts off saying, "Who is Judge Joe Brown?" He asked the question. So, it begins by saying he holds on to his American nationality. He's a lawyer and a TV personality who's best known for his starring role in the reality TV crime show Judge Joe Brown, also people who don't know him in Memphis, Tennessee. Okay? He was a valedictorian, meaning he was the best in his class. He enrolled in the University of California, and in 1969, obtained his bachelor's degree, and in 1973, obtained his Juris Doctorate degree. This is not part of his bio, this is not words. He's a man who speaks unapologetically truth to power. He is known for some unique sentencing decisions. I heard about it, but I think it's real, Judge, and if it is real, it was the most thought-provoking kind of sentence that has ever been issued in a courtroom. I think he, and correct me if I'm wrong, Judge, but I think a thief came in and stole something from someone, and you ordered that his house be entered into to retrieve or to compensate for what he had lost. I thought that was very unique.
I did that, sir.
He's a very courageous leader, he's a man who thinks outside of the box, so we welcome you to this forum.
Thank you, Attorney Harris. I shall be brief. I wrote a lot of this out to make sure I was brief. See, ending the violence, it looks like it's hopeless everywhere we look in the country. Okay. We look around the nation, we look around our city, and we see murder, felony, rape, about twenty-eight thousand untested rape kits and a lot of women in this county and in this city who have not received justice. We've got a scheme where we won't get peace if we can't get justice, and we've got seven point two million dollars to be paid out to a New York firm that has gotten its second five-year extension on doing them. A certain attorney I won't mention is getting almost a million dollars in fees for vetting them, and Tennessee Bureau of Investigation says, "We don't understand what the problem is. We can get all of these kids tested for free inside of one month, why don't you let us do it?" See, that's criminal activity that's ripping off the taxpayers by those who are in a position to act in a corrupt fashion for the people their surrogates for, who have been benefiting from a lot of tax dollars that all of us in this room and our neighbors pay that we get nothing out of. There is nothing delivered to the middle-class, black, white, brown, red, yellow in this city. There is no support for small businessmen. But we have the big five in this area. It's called real estate acquisition, management, development, construction, and construction material supply. And the way the game works is instead of putting the money that is available to work on giving the youth a cause, something to work for, to be part of, to hope for, to bring industry trade and manufacturing, education back into this area, what happens is the county commission and the city... what happens is the county commission and the city council get a little, either over or under the table, crumbs actually, they pass zoning variances, and the group that is into this big five, they get a zoning variance. The county commission or the city council pays out money, to tax dollars money, to build on the properties controlled by these people. They pay for the construction material, and then these people are supposed to give back four to six percent of their net to the city and/or county. And that net is always zeroed out, so we get nothing. So, instead of this city getting economic prosperity and coherent development, it exists as a jungle, it can be exploited by those who have the proper connections. We need these voting machines replaced. The Justice Department under the Bush administration, the Obama administration, and the Trump administration have found that they are absolutely corrupted. There's no way to correct them, and there hasn't been a legitimate fair election in this county since two thousand. That's twenty-two years ago. But for some reason, our county commission, every time it comes up, instead of passing a simple resolution to replace these machines, they voted down. And the money was put up in two thousand and eight, that's fourteen years ago, by the federal government from seized or drug monies to replace these machines. California got so disgusted with them that it put out an instruction manual online on how to hack an election with these machines. You need the encryption code, which I published, so I can show that the process is corrupted. You need the code for the offices in question, which are published every year by the Election Commission. You need the candidate codes, and by using a cell phone, what you do is dictate a text to a third party. And when you walk in to vote at the beginning of the early voting season, or if you wait until Election Day, early in the morning, when you get five feet away from the machine, you press send. Now you own that machine you're standing in front of, you own the whole precinct in ten minutes, and the whole system in forty-five minutes to an hour. And we have researched this, and we have discovered that this is in fact the case, just as the feds have said. Now, the reasons for killing, robbing, raping, burglarizing, gangsterizing, I'm gonna take a little more than five, since I have not much longer. It's not time to check out of the library. The reasons for these violations of law and order, in particular, killing, sometimes have very little to do with the victim. The defendant wants to die. He doesn't like his life. He doesn't have any future, no daylight at the end of his tongue. He's not trying to get high when he does drugs, he's trying to die. He knows it's killing. But you see, death by drugs is a form of socially acceptable suicide. We've all heard, death by a cop, suicide by a cop. Well, that's suicide by your neighbor. And this mechanism that we see a lot of this violence going around in is the result of the would-be killer attempting to provoke the victim into doing him the personal failure of killing him. He wants to die, so he's gonna mess with somebody and do all kinds of bad things to them, hoping to provoke that person into pulling the trigger on him. Or, the one that we get upset about is in scapegoating the victim. I feel that, because I did too, and I ain't, you know how. I can do this time, standing on my head, holding my breath, you know? And we get nowhere, and people talk about, we need to do something about getting them to understand how bad they make us feel when they kill one of our loved ones. Yeah, they do. But they don't care, because they don't care about themselves. I learned a lot of this because in that time period when everyone was nice enough to get me elected to two-eight-year term as a criminal court judge, I did put the opportunity to use to get some committees together with some doctors, psychiatrists, and clinical psychologists to study these phenomenon and see what we came up with. So, at some point, I'm telling you, come from that. Now, it is almost impossible to get someone to behave appropriately when he or she hates all life as much as he hates his own, or her own. This sort is very likely to resist any rehabilitative conduct or effort unless his perception is that his own death is imminent and desirable as a bad thing. In other words, you have to convince him, young man, young lady, you're dying, it's not a good thing, because there's a purpose that you ought to have in life. And we don't give these children a purpose and cause. They're told you're entitled, they're told there's nothing you have to do but what you want to do, and we don't give them any idea of what they ought to want to do. I'm probably one of the oldest people in this room, if not the oldest, but as that is the case, those on my generation, we used to understand that there were causes, home, family, your friends, your community, your city, your neighborhoods, your country, if you wanted to go that far. But our problem is, is we're told, if you are a man, you don't have to be a man, be something else. And I'm not talking about getting your free car in the bedroom, I'm talking about your responsibility. You're taught that you don't have to be what you want to be, because, uh, don't want to be, because there's no such thing as duty, there's no such thing as courage, honor, bravery, integrity. My God, we have to protect our children from bullying. The police, and the teachers, and the parents, we have to, no. What happens to a kid who grows up, never screws up the nerve to bust in a bully in his mouth? Okay? Now, there's a rage that demands to be assuaged. The nascent perpetrator will not alter his trajectory until there's something distract, distracts him from his fatalistic submission to his own pointless death, and an ending of what he perceives to be a pointless life. His home environment or her home environment is so disjointed from necessity that the boy or girl child grows up so self-hating that a lack of socialization and acculturation invites his or her attention to provoking his or her own death. That is a mechanism we discovered. Even the death penalty is not a deterrent to homicide, because you're actually giving the perpetrator what he wants. In the entire time I was on the bench, I only had two defendants acted off in the courtroom. And both times, what you mean, they gonna give me life? They need to put me in the chair, what do you think I killed him for? I'm gonna kill me somebody when I get to jail, so don't have to do me, and I ain't doing no time, I want to die. Okay, for most people, betrayed violence is merely, merely the conceptualization of a phenomenon. It isn't motivation. Those on my generation, we grew up looking at Woody Strode, that's a black actor back when, usually played somebody that was a cowboy in the cavalry, John Wayne, or went up, and there was a lot of violence, we had a lot of westerns, but that didn't cause us to go out and want to shoot somebody, or kill somebody. But when you get no home training, when there is not a family, and everybody that's supposed to be in charge is trying to do every damn thing they can to ruin the family. There's one organization I won't men, uh, mention, but some of you know what I'm talking about, in their mantra, what we believe, the first thing they say is, we are for the destruction of the traditional nuclear family. Family is a foundation of all humanity, if you have no family, you have no nothing. And we've got to do what we can collectively to put the elements of family upbringing, so people have proper home training, and maybe some of the girls get some charm school. You know? So, we get civility. Now, we're beginning to get to a point, as black people, that we can go in any restaurant in this town and get treated halfway decent. But there is a problem, we are taking some of those restaurants as a murderer or a gang from your own people and your own kin, but you hit the heaven if you just believe what the devil happened to sin. So, somebody, and I guess that's my job, I got used to it when I was on the bench, talking about you wrong, we're gonna change it. Now, I'll skip over a lot, because Ms. Christian is telling me the time is down. But one thing I would suggest that we need to implement, and I found that it worked when I tried it, and the recidivism rate in my courtroom was only eighteen percent, as contrasted with the statewide recidivism rate of eighty percent. And what that is, is the first cause you can put in a boy's head, because they all claim they want it, is to be a man. The first cause is manhood and what it stands for, and that provides a day-to-day focus and a confirmation with an appropriate code of conduct. And some of you have been in restaurants with me, when you see people come up and, Judge, you remember me?
Manager, please.
No.
Central library closes at fifteen minutes.
Okay. You remember me? No. Will you give me some time? Did I give you enough? Oh, no, no, see, was that thing about that, that you call being focused, so now I'm grandfather, and I try to teach the boys, my grandboys, and my sons, and the rest of the boys in the neighborhood, about being men, where you have duty, honor, obligation, responsibility, accountability, you're supposed to be brave and courageous to make where you live a better place, a more secure place, filled with economic prosperity, sense of purpose, morality, and ethics. And we are not doing that, and our schools are going to hell too. What has happened? The teachers don't even need a college degree anymore, they just need two years. We've got a private entity that hires them after training them and assigns them, fires them, promotes them, not the people. We've got a county board of education that's got a county board of education legal department, but we are Bert Porter and Johnson at five hundred to fifteen hundred dollars an hour for doing routine in-work. And that's another example of how our tax dollars are not used for things like restoring the infrastructure for Memphis Light Gas and Water. So, we don't have more of this problem where some people still don't have power. Now, we have an idea floating around about we need to sell it. I think there are people colluding with other people so that they can get some under-the-table payout. Because if you have a private entity operating a facility or a service, guess what? There are costs. Anytime you have something, there are costs. But when it's privatized, it's cost plus profit. Now, where do you think that profit's gonna come from that it doesn't have to right now? And if you're gonna stop the violence, then you need to have an example. And the children don't need to just see gangster hip-hop rap video with that poison they put out. They don't need to see that in combination with the people that are supposed to be representing them, protecting them, making it a better place, out there ripping off big time. Now, all of that, we need a district attorney general who looks at the whole population as our people, not just somebody to exploit and keep under control, like they're wild animals, wild animals. We need to take control of our courts and turn them into effective devices that institute social engineering that's effective, that will bring about change in the neighborhood, not making it into a worst hood. All right? We need to establish community courts or arbitration centers so that the general population has some useful way of resolving disputes, and not just turning to violence after the tremendous buildup of interpersonal hostility and aggression. We need civilian control and direction of law enforcement, not where we got an ineffective review board, but where the civilians...
We've got questions.
Okay.
Questions and answers.
Okay.
We need to take the last ten minutes for that.
Sixty seconds, so I should be finished with this one. The thing that we have to do is put a Pentagon model in place. You've got a civilian secretary of defense, a civilian secretary of the army, a civilian secretary of the Navy, et cetera. We need a civilian director who can be removed for political ineffectiveness or lack of sensitivity to the population. We need a civilian sub-director over sex crimes, over uniform patrol, over traffic, over homicide. So, the civilian component becomes an active component in the running of law enforcement. We need to allow the population to belong to the process of community order, so that we can keep down the violence. We need to recruit the police into the process of recruiting youthful leadership. In other words, are you a thug, or are you a leader? And we need to give them an opportunity to do something about taking this perverted juvenile court that is a money-making proposition and turn it into an effective control device for wayward youth. They operate on the basis now of generating worse conduct, because they're completely privatized and it's all about profit. The more you screw the kids up, the more they get in trouble, until there's nothing you can do but try them as adults. That being the case, let's see what the questions are. All right, you get the idea, there's a lot to be done. By the way, while you're bringing the questions up, there's a Mississippi River where we can be sinking hydroelectric plants down there, and bringing industry in here, so people have something they can work at gainfully.
Well, let's all thank Judge Joe Brown, all of our panelists. It's very exciting that they are here tonight. My name is Christian Kirk, hello, everybody. So, I am losing your questions to the panelists. The first one we have is for Brittany Thornton. Brittany, mental illness is a problem in our communities, and it contributes to crime in Memphis. What can we do to help those who suffer and are turning to crime to survive? They are recruited by gangs and given tasks like being a lookout. What can we do to address that?
So, my background is in social work, so this really resonates with me. I taught for seven years within the school system, and it was really disappointing to see my colleagues that are social workers tasked with doing bus duty or being, you know, runners for errands. We seldom were able to actually practice our profession. So, I know within the schools, letting our professionals be professionals is a great step to helping support mental health issues that are likely in schools. And then I think that at this point, we have to just acknowledge how many victims have not been diagnosed. So, we have so many people in our communities, our schools are a great catch-all. Now, they are just the people that we're complaining about, but we don't, we haven't had the opportunity to actually support them. So, I think at this point, like, as an organizer, that's one of the reasons why I came out of the school system and came into the neighborhood, just at the community level, to start a nonprofit. We need more resources. Our government is not enough, and so we need more, you know, whether it's in more nonprofits that are actually steeped in this particular work, or support. I think honestly, if we coalesce some of the existing efforts, we would do better. There's too many people picking out funds for things, and we just brought everyone under one umbrella or brought everyone into one entity. To be able to strain our resources, that'd be the most efficient. But I also recognize this is Memphis, I don't think that that's actually the best solution, because it probably won't happen. But something like that, to be able to stop having to just kind of get nuggets and chase dollars, like, we need to have it all in one place, so that we can actually service our neighborhoods. Also, I just say, stop sending people downtown to be able to be serviced. These amenities, these services should be accessible within our neighborhoods.
The safe question, please, posed to Linda Harris, please, Attorney Linda Harris.
Okay, so I, I agree, and I agree with Brittany, so, the community, if we took one mental health... So, um, the, the community, if we took one mental health provider, because everybody's got to have a building, everybody's got to have all this overhead, right? But if we took one mental health provider, uh, who's, who's receiving money, we could put that one mental health provider in community A on Monday, community B on Tuesday, community C on Wednesday, and, and use these resources. So what you said will never happen. One of the things I'd like to see is organizations register with the district attorney general's office. They get $6 million a year in grants. And what you see happening is they give this money to the same organizations that aren't being affected in our community over and over again, and we just need to spread the pie. So I would like to see, uh, organizations that are doing things in our community to help register with the district attorney's office. We'll know, we can identify those resources and then we can send them out into the community.
Attorney Durn, the, the same question, please.
In regards to mental health...
How, how do we address mental health issues in our communities? Uh, what can we do to help those who suffer and are turning to crime to survive?
That's a, it, it's really a compound problem. It's a compound, uh, 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 solution. First, we got to identify that there's a mental health. Then we've got to do something about it. The, and we have to have the, the resources and insurance and everything to apply. But in order to address any problem in our community, and this may be getting off point in a way, we've got to get out and vote to put the people in that's going to do it. Us talking about it is one thing. We know pretty much what the problem is, but in order to address this, we are going to have to vote and put the individuals in that give them and will help. And mental health issues, we, we, we've had it, we address it. They've got multiple medications that they give for it, but I don't know in the long run how to resolve it other than to let to address it in a non-violent way.
Attorney Durn, while you have the mic, we have another question for you. You have referenced suspending a part of the Constitution to have real change. What part would that be?
Part of the, a lot of part, a long, a good part of the Constitution that we would have to do is, is, is in terms of seizure. Knowing what the problem is, going and grabbing these individuals and putting them in a place that will, uh, make sure that the other part of society that, that is non-violent, and I'm talking about violence, in terms of, uh, suspending the Constitution about certain rights that we would give to certain people which enables that criminality to continue. And we may have to. And I said, I just suggested that as a solution. I don't know what the answer is. I know what the problems are. Maybe that's part of what we have to do, suspend the Constitution, certain parts of this Constitution and address it.
If you would pass the mic to your attorney, colleague Attorney Jefferson. Attorney Jefferson, would you please explain the role of Chancery Court?
Chancery Court is a court of, um, I'll say extraordinary jurisdiction. It is a court that does that which ought to be done. So you have maxims and principles of equity that control as it relates to Chancery Court. That's a court where injunctions or restraining orders are issued. A lot of times, I think you might be familiar with, we have church disputes. Those disputes are handled in Chancery Court. Chancery Court deals with matters that are, and this is a legal term, unliquidated damages and tort in contract is not what Chancery Court does. You have to know exactly what your remedy or your relief is. So we are in liquidated damages with, you have to know exactly what it's, so say you're, you have a contractor that has not finished your house. You sue in Chancery Court because you know exactly what you need to get done. So Chancery Court is a court of equity. We deal with principles of equity and maxims. That which ought to be done, you can't come to court with unclean hands. You can't have done wrong and then expect to get relief. And it's a whole lot of other, uh, maxims, but equity, I mean, Chancery Court does that which ought to be done.
Attorney Jefferson, while you have the mic, I'll ask you this next question that's posed to you. How would you address elder abuse, elder financial abuse in particular in Chancery Court?
Chancery Court has concurrent jurisdiction, meaning the same type of jurisdiction as probate court. A lot of the matters that, um, you're talking about as far as dealing with exploitation of the elderly and their funds are dealt with in probate court, but you can deal with those matters in, uh, Chancery Court as well. Getting people who are bondable, qualified, ethical, of good credit, insurable, to actually come in and act as a receiver, a conservator, or a, what a better term might be guardian over elderly individuals' funds. I currently serve as a fiduciary for the Veterans Administration, so I manage, uh, a lot of veterans' funds, and these people are deemed to be incompetent and unable to handle their own business. Minors that, um, have large sums of money, I deal with those funds, and I also deal with adults, which is a conservative, where they have money. You need somebody who, number one, wants to do the work, take responsibility, to do what's in a person's best interest, to help further their life, to help them be able to live the best life possible with the funds that they have available. Try to make sure that I gather individuals and compile a list of individuals that would be, one, willing to do the work, two, qualified to do the work, and three, have the desire to do the work. Because helping people manage their day-to-day affairs is something that you really have to have a passion for and want to have.
Thank you so much for that answer. The next question is posed to Attorney Harris. How does the DA propose to reduce the juvenile court's rolls? The second question is, how can the DA's office reduce the number of juveniles charged as adults and reduce gun crimes?
We, we, we're out of time.
We are? You have to wrap it up.
Okay, I'm gonna wrap it up by saying, I think there is such thing as schoolhouse, jailhouse pipeline, and, uh, sending fathers, it's like dads, like Joe, Joe said, sending, uh, men and helping our children to learn how to become, our, our young men, how to become lawyers, giving them that support. But there are a lot of things, there's no one answer, but I, I don't think that our children should be sent to juvenile court unless it's just absolutely, you can't have that job at all.
Okay. Thank, thank you.